... I'm trying to think of people who've been five minutes and have had a fucker on their watch. Stay away, you know, you know, I mean, it's like a fair number. Yeah, and especially when you're never, that's probably why he's trying to make sure that you're. Really? Yeah, yeah.
Recording in progress.
Call to order the regular meeting of the Riedel City Council. Roll call please.
Mayor Garance?
Here.
Mayor Proton Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Orr?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Woodall?
Here. We are returning from closed session and there is nothing to report on. Now, can we make a stand to do a quick poll? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations. Students wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph M. Brown Act. Items requiring council action not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, now that the finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please let me comment to a maximum of three minutes. Anything?
But I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Any hand raised? No. Any email? Okay, then we will, um, close this item and move on to the consent calendar. Would anyone like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Number five.
Number five? Then we can, I don't know, what do we do? Um, so is there a motion to approve items one through four of the consent calendar? So, move second. We have a motion in a second. Motion carries five zero. Councilmember Wilson.
Yes, um, on item five is the letter to the Public Utilities Commission for, um, opposing the removal of the landlines to AT&amp;T Home Service. Yeah, I just wanted to bring that up. There's not a lot of people here, obviously, but anyone tuning in. If there's any, any chance to oppose that or event, you come up with some kind of something uh, to know and to be aware that the AT&amp;T is wanting to eliminate landlines to Humboldt County. And so that's, um, we believe it's counsel, but that's not a good thing. And, uh, because you'll be depending on wireless or satellite or off the one or whoever to make your connections for any fault service. So I just want to say that.
Yeah, that, that's, thank you. And there is a hearing, I believe, on the twenty eighth, um, with, um, the California Public Utilities Commission that you can go online for. Uh, as, uh, Councilmember Wilson said, it's hugely impactful. If you don't have, a lot of people rural don't even have internet to, um, to fall to. So for them to take away the communication of last resort, that it will, it will impact not only Riedel, but all the rural communities and even just in, um, major cities. If, if you don't have, um, the ability to have capable, to have internet, you will be affected adversely and you will be cut off. So anyone who's listening, if you can get there and zoom in, make your opposition known, like, uh, Councilmember Wilson said, that would be a really good, sure thing to do. And so, you know, motion to approve that?
I'd make a motion with.
Thank you. Is there a second? Uh, motion to approve the letter of opposition. We have a motion in a second. Motion carries five zero. Reports and staff communications, city manager, page fifty in our packet.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. So, um, you know, over the weekends, uh, we did receive, uh, four, just shy of four and a half inches of rain, uh, over the course of seventy-two hours. Um, so this led to us every day having a SSO event, uh, uh, at our weakest point in our wastewater collection system. Um, and, you know, I want to just remind the public that, uh, the system was, was pretty significantly damaged, uh, during the earthquakes of the last year. Uh, and that most of what we see out of it, out of this is not, it's not raw sewage. It is a highly diluted, um, inflow infiltration. It's essentially water getting into the, into the piping system. Uh, but I do want to just say thank you to our public work staff, um, our wastewater superintendent Sunshine for having to deal with this, uh, over the course of, of the weekend, a three-day weekend. Uh, and, uh, it's a lot of kudos to her on, on, on this front. I'll just remind the council, uh, that we are working with the state on an enhanced sanitary sewer evaluation study for the cammering of the system, uh, including poster quit, redoing some of the data that we had collected pre-earthquake. Uh, and then also we are working with the state on upsizing the, uh, painter street lines, the final, uh, line into our wastewater plan, uh, so that we avoid, uh, these, uh, these, uh, SSO events from occurring. Uh, we are, however, highly dependent on, uh, state funding to make those projects possible as, as the council's aware, um, you know, our rates are, uh, at kind of a carrying capacity for the community and engaging in these capital projects are very expensive, uh, for a relatively small weight base, uh, to sustain. So I know it's been the council's priority and to make sure we leverage as many grand dollars as we can through the state of California to address that, uh, and, uh, just make sure the public is aware that we take this very seriously and we are, uh, working as hard as we can to come up with the best options to move, uh, these projects forward. Um, that's saying, that said, you know, obviously the state is running into a lot of financial difficulties. Seems like your latest reports out today may have seen even worse. Um, but, uh, we are counting on our state programs to help provide the funding to get these projects done so that we don't have this problem in the future. Uh, one other thing, I, I, it's really important, I want to make sure that I mention that Supervisor Michelle Bushnell, uh, made sure that, I was aware, the other city managers were aware of a Humboldt County Virtual Town Hall on February twenty-second. So that's this coming Thursday at five thirty. And this is related to really the homeowner insurance crisis, which is impacting, uh, community members here in Riedel. Uh, and it will be, uh, continuing to be an evolving situation that, uh, I think people need to pay attention to. Um, and that if you are getting your insurance packet information annually from your home, from your insurance policy, you really want to look that up and, and read into it and make sure that you have the appropriate privileges and that your policy isn't being, uh, realigned. Um, so the, the virtual town hall, uh, will allow you to hear from experts about emergency preparedness and how also California is addressing the homeowner insurance crisis. And there will be, uh, folks from the California Department of Insurance, uh, United Policyholders, CAL FIRE, and the UC Cooperative Extension, uh, on that, uh, particular hall. You can go to the county website, on their homepage is a, uh, link, uh, to, uh, to sign up for the town hall. Uh, and you can also come here to City Hall and, uh, uh, code will be available for you to sign in. Uh, I want to make sure that people are paying attention to this because this is a major, uh, major complication. For example, in earthquake recovery efforts, um, you are not going to be eligible, uh, for the grants that are available for you if you have lost a homeowner's insurance policy or otherwise currently insured. So a lot of these programs, again, are loan-based and those, those loans, even government loans, will require you to have, uh, a homeowner's insurance policy. So this is a big deal on multiple levels, but in particular, uh, here in Riedel. Uh, with that, um, I don't have too much else to, to update the council and we will have an important, uh, measure, uh, or letter to recommend to the council at your next, uh, agenda. And with that, I'm happy to answer any, uh, questions that the council may have.
Thank you, city manager. April ten?
No questions.
Thank you. Rich, you got anything? Any questions?
Okay.
Any hand raised?
Any email?
Yeah. And thank you very much. I just want to say thank you, um, especially to, um, wastewater. Oh my goodness, you guys, it's been rough. That's so cool. Thank you. Probably been rough with water too, but I know wastewater has been really super rough. So thank you all on public works for everything you've done. Appreciate it. Okay, then we will close staff communications and move on to the special presentation. Fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, mid-year financial report, page fifty-three in our packets. Financial director?
I'll put that on. I'll just figure whether to get the PowerPoint up on a small presentation for us.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Garance and members of the city council. The mid-year financial report summarizes and analyzes the city's financial performance for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Details of the report describe revenues received and expenditures incurred during the first half of the fiscal year and explains material differences between the values and adjusted budget. A budget outlook will be given, reviewing several factors that may impact the city financially over the next few years. This report was created using un-audited financials as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. The city has three main fund types into which its finances are consolidated. The general fund and the enterprise funds, which consist of water and sewer, and special revenue funds. At the mid-year, city expenses exceeded revenues by just over seven hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. This is principally due to the timing of the city receiving its revenues from the county of Humboldt and other government agencies, in addition to grant-funded work completed yet not reimbursed. This slide compares city department expenditures delineating operating expenses, debt service, and capital projects. Most departments were operating at or below fifty cent, fifty percent of expenditures at the mid-year point, with departments such as streets, water, or sewer seeing elevated levels due to ongoing earthquake repair or grant-funded work, such as the sanitary sewer evaluation study in the sewer department and the drinking water infrastructure improvement project in the water department. The city received twenty-nine percent of the budgeted general fund revenues at the mid-year compared to twenty-one percent the year prior. Property tax and new vehicle license fees are typically received from the county in the second half of the fiscal year, which is the primary reason why revenues are below estimate at the mid-year. Forty percent of budgeted campus revenues were received at the mid-year compared to fifty-five percent last year. This is the result of ordinance three nine seven dash two zero two three, a local ordinance that allowed cultivators on the Denny Moore Plateau to make a one-time tax payment by March fifteenth as an alternative to quarterly tax payments during the year. The street funds received fifty-nine percent of the budgeted revenues at mid-year. Actual street funds expenditures were sixty-seven percent of adopted budget appropriations at mid-year compared to fifty percent last year. This increase is primarily due to ongoing emergency or quick expenditures allocated to various street funds, in addition to pass-through income the city allocates to the Humboldt Senior Resource Group and HTA. Actual revenues for the sewer enterprise fund received were fifty-one percent at mid-year, with forty-nine percent of allocations expended. The sewer department had expended thirty-eight percent of the capital and special projects allocation. The six-point-six-million-dollar treatment plant loan with the California Water Board is set to be paid off in the year twenty forty-three. Actual revenues for the water enterprise fund received were forty-nine percent at mid-year. Fifty-two percent of budgeted expenditures were recorded. Expenditures in the water capital fund were at one-hundred-and-forty-five percent. This increase resulted from emergency earthquake repairs at about a hundred and seven thousand dollars and the Cal OES grant-funded Eel River Pipeline seismic retrofit project, which has incurred about sixty-eight thousand dollars in costs as of mid-year. The water plant also has a loan of two-point-seven million dollars with the state of California that will be paid off in the year twenty twenty-nine. The mid-year review shows revenue and expenditure remain largely within budgeted levels. However, several factors are anticipated to impact the budget outlook. The map for earthquake lists of projects had a cost estimate of nearly thirty-six million dollars. If no additional reimbursements are granted, the city's twenty-five percent cost share will be just under nine million dollars. The cannabis market continues to be challenging for local governments and producers alike, but the city remains confident in the long-term viability of the market and its impact on the community. The Taxpayer Protection Government Accountability Act is an initiative currently proposed for the November two thousand twenty-four ballot that has the potential to impact retail and major road sales tax. This is a substantial revenue source to the city that would have profound impacts on the budget if altered or removed. The current year's budgeted revenues from the local sales tax are estimated at three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Finally, street funds. Although electric car owners do pay a fee meant to offset the loss of heat and gas tax, the state-based formulas are inadequate to maintain funding. The Legislative Analyst Office predicts a six-billion-dollar decline in tax revenue over the next decade. The result of less gas tax to the city will result in a greater percentage of general fund monies to cover the shortfall. This concludes the mid-year report. I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Just one question. Thank you, Travis. These are always boiled down so nicely and succinctly and I appreciate that. Um, in regards to the electric vehicles, uh, I think it was like sometime last year, the year before, people were talking about giving like a road tax or road use tax, I think it was called, to try to account for, you know, the mandates on electric vehicles or something. Is that still a thing? Is that something that we vote to see a piece of?
I've seen that in some of the research that I've been doing. I haven't seen anything concrete yet for the current. Um, that among a few other options are being looked at because that six-billion, you know, dollar figure, um, is a real number, you know, that will have to be looked at over the next few years. So that among other options, the state's looking at to help alleviate that.
I think it was a Cal City's meeting I heard about that, and I haven't heard about it since though. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I'm glad you're seeing it tossed around.
Right.
Um, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
No, I don't think.
Councilmember Orr?
No question.
Councilmember Woodall?
No, just thank you again for all the.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Travis. Does any, do you have any questions? Any hand raised? Any email? Okay, I think, um, that is a receive and file. So we'll close that and move on to the temporary waiver of sewer fees for customers whose residences have been red-tagged by declared natural disaster, page sixty-nine in our packet.
Thank you, Mayor Garance and member of the council. Following the December twentieth, twenty-twenty-two earthquake and subsequent tremors in January twenty-twenty-three, the Riedel City Council recognized a significant hardship faced by residents whose homes sustained damage and were deemed uninhabitable or red-tagged. In response, Resolution fifteen seventy-eight dash two zero two degree was passed, waiving sewer fees for residents for a period of six months. Resolution one five seven eight dash two zero two three approved by the Riedel City Council, waived sewer fees for red-tagged residences from December twentieth, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. A total of six thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars in customer sewer fees were waived during this period. Subsequent to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, customers were billed at a pre-earthquake rate per Resolution one five seven eight dash two zero two three. At the February sixth, two thousand twenty-four city council meeting, concerns were raised regarding sewer bill charges for unoccupied, red-tagged residences. To address these concerns, the city staff have directed to revisit Resolution one five seven eight dash two zero two three. City staff developed a revised sewer bill adjustment claim form allowing ratepayers with red-tagged residences to apply for a sewer fee waiver from the date of the declared local or state disaster until the residence's red-tag designation is removed. The eligibility criteria are as follows. The resident must have done officially red-tag following a declared natural disaster. The applicant must be the designated ratepayer for the affected residents. The applicant must demonstrate active efforts toward removing the red-tag designation. And finally, all completed warrants will undergo a review by the finance director and require approval by the city manager. Attached to this is the updated, uh, sewer adjustment claim form, including the resolution. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has.
Thank you. I'm gonna go along here, can I be right there?
No, I, 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 I'll take this one. Um, so just to be super clear for the record, what this is about is moving forwards. This is not about retroactively waiving sewer fees for people who are still red-tagged.
This would retroactively waive sewer fees for those who are red-tagged who are currently not living in their residence. This has been written in a way to capture anyone who has been impacted by the December twenty-twenty-two earthquake event so that they qualify for any sewer fee that they've incurred that fits the qualifications outlined in the resolution.
So it is retroactive. Would those retroactive payments come as, like, the city just writes you a check or instead of credit to your account?
The great question. For those who haven't paid anything and are receiving a bill, no, the bill will be waived. There's no payment to give back in that instance. In the case where someone has paid the bills and qualified for the, uh, the fee waiver, it would be credited to the account. The city would not be paying, um, the customer in that sense.
So people who were red-tagged and are not anymore, would this apply to the time that they were red-tagged?
Per the resolution, no.
Okay. I think I had another question, but I forgot it. So let's move on. Okay. I think I had another question, but I forgot it. So let's move on.
Okay. Councilmember Woodall? Didn't we look at it then? We still have eight houses this day?
Great question, yes. So currently on the list that we have in the city, we have eight homes that are currently red-tagged as a result of the December 2022 earthquake event.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Orr?
The only one I have is, do you have any, or an idea of how many houses were red-tagged but came out of red-tag during that time and would not be affected retroactively? Between the June 30th and now, how many houses came out of red-tag but were paying sewer fees on the house?
Right. I don't have that information up there right now, but I'd be happy to look into it and get back to you.
So, Councilmember Wilson?
Councilman Carter has a question, but it isn't so good.
I remembered my last question. Has anybody else in the community besides Mr. Saunders, who was here two weeks ago, come to the city asking for this?
No.
It's just him?
Correct.
Okay.
Any questions?
Okay, I'm going to complicate things just a little bit. I spoke into Mr. Saunders. He's not here tonight because it is his mother's 90th birthday and he's taking her out to dinner, and I said that is a really good reason not to attend the meeting with the agenda item that you put on the agenda. I also spoke to the disaster case manager, and she did not fully understand where our sewer billing system works. I explained it to her, now that she does understand. There is a possibility that these fees could be maybe met via the Unmet Needs Committee and some of that funding. So I'm just putting that out there. If we don't pass this, there is still hope for people to be reimbursed for this thing. That is my point. And just wanted to clarify that for the community. If we are trying, and I don't know that we are, but if we are trying to leave disaster relief and city government completely separate, I think we could still do that through disaster case management. And that's, that's my piece. That's it. I'm shutting one off.
Okay, yeah. But that will do for this disaster, not necessarily for the next disaster.
I do think that for the next disaster, we should have it definitely wait in it. Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to make it quick now, this was written, you know, not only to capture this, but really the future. That's what staff felt like the direction was to make sure that this happens again, that we have a mechanism in place so that we don't have to go through these steps. And in an instance like this again.
Any hand raised for the email? Is there a motion to approve? What am I, page 69? Is there a motion to approve? Temporary, here we are. Resolution number 1598-2023, temporarily waiving sewer fees for customers whose residences have been red-tagged by declared natural disaster.
It's supposed to be 2003 or 2004?
2004. It should be 2004, huh?
Most of 2003.
Mine says, it really should say 2004. We have both, I think.
So good.
I have mine says 2024, the new one, on page 71.
Oh, now I'm just serious, yeah. The resolution does say 2004.
Okay, the resolution says 2004.
I wondered which is where I was reading it from. So I don't think any more can complete it. Wait, can I make that go on? 1598-2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There are a motion and there are exceptions again. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Now we are moving on to public hearings. Approved. Cost recovery for the abatement of 289 Berkeley Street, page 75 in our packet.
Given your presence and members of the council, it is my recommendation to open the public hearing for the cost recovery for the abatement at 289 Berkeley Street.
Are there any questions? Councilmember, is there any? Do you have a question? No. Okay. Okay. Councilmember Orr, Councilmember Wilson? Any hand raised? Any emails? Good, we're good. Okay, is there a motion? Wait, when do we close or approve? Is there a motion to approve the findings in order confirming accounts and assessments for the abatement of 289 Berkeley Street?
So moved.
Is that it? Yep. Motion in the second. Motion carries five zero. Cost recovery for the abatement of 483 Fourth Avenue, page 87 in our packet.
That is me again. Thank you, Mayor Garance and members of the council. My request to open public hearing for the cost recovery for the abatement of 601 Guterson Lane.
Thank you. Are there any questions? No. Any other ones that she has?
I agree totally.
Yes, we have this agree. Thank you. Questions down here, may I ask? Councilmember Wilson, you good?
Yes.
Any hand raised? Any emails? There's nothing. Let's go ahead. Okay, then, I will ask for a motion to approve. Page three. A motion to approve the findings in order confirming accounts and assessments for the abatement of 601 Guterson Lane. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
There are a motion and a second. Motion carries five zero. And the third item, cost recovery for the abatement of 483 Fourth Avenue, page 87 in our packet.
Again, it is my recommendation to open public hearing for cost recovery abatement of 483 Fourth Avenue.
Questions? Councilmember Wilson or Woodall? No. Right. Hand raised? Emails? Is there a motion to approve the findings in order confirming accounts and assessments for the abatement of 483 Fourth Avenue? I saw, we have a motion, second. We have a second. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Newsweek News. Appreciate you. Now we move on to Clean Award of Bid. Clean California Gateway Laskate and Cooper project to the Yagamo Corporation doing business as J and G Lawn and Garden in the amount of $148,984 and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement, page 93 in our packet.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. I will do my best to unwind this ball of yours here. So, going back, you know, several years or actually a couple of decades, the city was awarded a grant to, for the original gateway project, which was our wavy sidewalks and the landscape to convert the old highway into a more friendly interface. That design, original design, never included trees in the original design. And subsequently, the city decided that, that the city wanted trees in the gateway. And so, these trees were planted into the old road base, which is mostly gravel, and resulted in, you know, trees that were mostly unsuccessful, that were not necessarily healthy trees. And so, over, over the years, this has been brought up as a topic of conversation as to how, as to how to make the gateway work. And so, you know, fundamentally, in talking with Carver, and this would have been several years ago, that in order for the trees to be successful, the root ball area would have to be excavated, the gravel would have to be removed and soil deposited in order for the trees to be successful. So during the pandemic, while the state was flush with cash, kind of out of thin air, a grant became available that, that the city was unaware of, which is the Clean California part. So over $300 million was made available statewide, and there was a relatively short amount of time to make application for, for this particular project. The city ended up submitting two applications with, you know, maybe we'll get something, maybe we won't. In the end, both applications were accepted. So we have the Eel River Trail moving forward, and we also have this gateway design. In the original application that was made to Caltrans to be administering Clean California authority, what the design called for was a uniform set of trees and that essentially the plantings in the grant application were failed and that there would have to be, you know, new trees planted and appropriately planted with new root bases and whatnot. So that was kind of the fundamental application that was judged by the state as to what was acceptable and what wasn't. So we spent a lot of time with the AdHoc Committee going over different ideas about what maybe we could additionally implement in the gateway project, thinking that we had, you know, the potential to, to do a lot of different things in the gateway, including at different times looking at artificial turf and looking at redoing some of the things that were not included in the original grant application. And so, I got into that and the staff, everybody got into kind of different ideas about ways that we could go even further with it. But the bottom line is that when we submitted the application, when it was funded, there were specific deliverables in, in the grant. And so, when we, when we put out our original bid for the projects, it came in way over budget, as the council may recall. And so, in conversing with the state of California and Clean California folks, their recommendation was to basically boil it down to the basics. They did some cost estimates. The original grant application, they felt could fit into the budget more or less. So when we stripped down to the bare bones of what the grant called for and put it back out, we got J and G Landscaping with an appropriate bid amount that was in the budget category. So with that, and I know there have been discussions about preserving some of the trees, particularly the cherry trees in the gateway. And that conversation mostly occurred in the discussions with the AdHoc Committee. And as far as Karen looked back in the minutes, there was never a specific council direction to specifically save the cherry trees. But what we were trying to do is figure out a way to, to make that work. And so, in our discussions with the state, we said, well, we, in thinking that it was a reasonable change order, scope changed that some of the trees could be preserved. But, but in the state's assessment of it, it fundamentally changes what the rubric that they judged the grant on. So, which was a uniform set of trees up and down the gateway that the current plantings were not healthy and not able to be saved. So in, in this, in this bid was included the removal of those trees, essentially the destruction of the remaining trees. However, the AdHoc Committee said, or recommendation was, let's see if we can have the contractor come up with some estimates to save the trees, knowing that the grant wasn't going to cover that, but that the city might be willing to put up funding for us to have the trees plucked appropriately and then gifted to, to folks who wanted the trees, through some sort of mechanism that we haven't developed yet. So, so that's the broad picture, that it's mostly the, the tree saving is, is a discussion for the next agenda item. But what is on this particular item, section O, item five, is specifically the J and G landscaping contract that's in compliance with what the state wants to see occur based on the grant application that the, that the city submitted. So, so our recommendation is to go ahead and approve this particular contract and to, to move forward with this project because we are limited by time in terms of implementation, and we want to get the contractor ordering the appropriate equipment and making sure that it's in their schedule. And then the next agenda item, we can discuss the, specifically the tree elements and the authorizations for change orders. Another option that's not written down here, if, 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 if the project is not acceptable to the council as a group, is that we can return the grant. I'm sure the state would like that because they're facing, you know, potentially a $70-plus billion deficit. The city's time investment in this is somewhat substantial between staff time and, but our, our actual hard costs in development of this project at this point are about $3,500 for ADA compliance. We had to hire somebody to help us do some of the design of the exercise station related to ADA compliance. So we can still stop the project and, and return the grant with minimal exposure to the city. If that's the route that the council, the whole council would like to go.
Thank you, city manager. So I will open this up for questions. I will say right off, though, that returning the grant, I can't tell you how opposed I would be to that and what I would think of it, but I don't think we should do that, Ralph. So, Councilmember Woodall? No questions? From everyone? Councilmember Orr? Councilmember Wilson?
Oh, there's no question. That is fine.
Any hand raised? Emails? Ross, anything? Then I will ask for a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in coordination with, yeah, in coordination with the city attorney.
So moved.
There are a motion, is there a second? I'm going to abstain. I'm really conflicted about this, and the AdHoc did a wonderful job. Our staff did, but there's just some things I can't quite get over. So I abstain. Thank you. Okay. Motion carries the four with one extension. Councilmember Woodall? Same. And our next item is to authorize the city manager to approve change orders of the $31,941 for the Clean California Gateway Project, including up to $10,941 for cherry tree removals. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. So the city did receive a 100, nearly $198,000 grant for this particular project from the Clean California State Grant Program. In addition, staff did outreach to multiple potential funders to augment the budget in light of inflation. We were successful in securing a $5,000 donation from Pacific Gas Electric towards this particular project. And then the council has, in the current budget, appropriated $38,000 in city beautification funding for projects exactly like this particular project. And so, the council approved Resolution 1596 that authorized that allocation to be available for this particular project. So when you pull together all of these different funding sources, we have approximately $240,000 towards, towards the project. Again, we've covered in prior meetings and then just with our last agenda item, that we have in motion contracts for the exercise station and also now our landscaping portion. And what we need to do is also to set up the funding for contingencies in case there are complications with the construction. Things generally do come up, especially when you're working in an old highway right-of-way concrete obstruction, that you didn't anticipate those sorts of things. So we're recommending 10% that contingency across the board for those, which is about $21,000. And then, and then also with the discussion from the AdHoc Committee about saving the trees, what that leaves in this available budget is approximately $10,941. So based on the estimates from the contractor, who does not have the exact type of equipment at this point. Who does not have the exact type of equipment at this point in time to do the root ball extraction. And so they would have to manually dig out the trees. Some of them are a little bit larger and would require a piece of heavy equipment. And so those, those costs are listed in. So the estimate that, working with the contractor. And our own estimate for thirteen of these trees to be removed is approximately seventy-one hundred dollars. Give or take, that's a very rough estimate. And so, but that would then make those trees available for donation for people to, to claim a tree. In, in these figures is not a figure for transplanting a location. There, we just have very limited city-owned states to be able to, to transplant the trees. And we also have one hundred and fourteen trees on their way to be planted in, in the Gateway Project, which includes city hall and grounds. All the way down to the Gateway sign. So this is an option for the council. It has to come strictly from city funds. So this would be out of the thirty-eight thousand dollars in beautification funding. And, and obviously we want to get the contractor on to all of this because it would be one of the first things that we would need to, to do. And to make sure that it doesn't impact our, our grant timeline. But these are the, these are the recommendations. Certainly the council can make any decision it wants to. We do recommend having at least the ten percent contingencies for the, for the project. Because there undoubtedly will be some obstacles towards the construction. And then we want to make sure that the council has the opportunity to make that additional assessment within the budget. Within our available two hundred, nearly two hundred forty-one thousand dollar budget. To make that option as to whether you want to have the trees essentially rescued from, from the destruction. And then, and then donated to the individuals or organizations that would like to sponsor or take, take the tree.
Thank you, City Manager. Councilmember Will. I'm looking at you with a really mean, "Councilmember Wilson." Councilmember Wilson.
I'm, I'm okay with the ten percent for the thirty-one thousand, whatever it is for contingency. Uh, the twenty-one thousand for the, for the contingency. I was, I was about to follow that. I'm conflicted about the thirteen cherry trees that we're removing. And make them available to the public. Part of the thing is the, the, whatever the contractor was, said that he can't guarantee that they're gonna survive. That's why we were taking them out in the first place. And I know this got, kind of horsed around last time, but the clarity, I think it's clarity. I was asking last time that you would be back here and explain, which you've done a great job of doing to us. And particularly the part where they, they may not survive. You know, I'm not one for wanting to destroy the trees. I'm, with our limited fund, I'm out of all of the ten thousand dollars going towards. That expense. And that's, that's just my man. I haven't actually come to a total decision of what I want to do. I wanted to hear from the, the AdHoc Committee. Kind of justification for why we're taking them out and passing them on when we already. It sounds as though we already said we were gonna, they were gonna be destroyed. Is that correct? That they aren't gonna live? I mean, is that, that's why we got, we're getting rid of them to have the.
We were getting, we were, the original, the original idea is uniformity and a beautiful gateway. There's a grant available and that's, and, and so we have a lot of, we have cherry trees, we have floppy trees. I don't know the name of them, but there's, you know, it just isn't uniform. And we had this opportunity to get like a beautiful gateway. So that was the original thing. There was never, I didn't, I don't think either of us or anybody really thought. That they were going to say, well, you have to dig up the trees that are clearly living and thriving. So there was no decision, one was, there was no, we didn't address that either way. How you're gonna take the trees out because we assumed that the living viable cherry trees are gonna be left and we're gonna plant around them. But that was the initial assumption. Well, once the Clean California came back and, you know, how grand people are, I was like, blah, blah, blah. So they, so now we have, we don't have a choice but to, well, we have a choice. Give the grant back or.
Dig them up.
Dig them up or kill them. So it's, I'm hard pressed I want to kill a tree. I mean, whoa, whoa. I really, it's, I don't even think, that's not even in my head. I can't even think about killing a tree just to kill a tree. That being said, I really want the city of Riedel to have a statement of, of, so look, something that raises us up. And, and you come into Riedel and you think, oh my goodness, this is such a beautiful town. Because we know the outside, the, the beauty of Riedel is absolutely beautiful. Coming into Riedel, I want that to be at that same level of beauty. And so that's, you know, Amanda and I were talking on the AdHoc Committee and with the staff. And coming back to council, that's what we were thinking. So there's no, also the part of me that wants to turn this grant down. So I'm conflicted. I mean, I, I'm conflicted. I'm not conflicted. It's just that as far as finances goes, I know that Riedel doesn't just have money to throw around. So I, so I recognize that. So what, the decision we come to, we come to. But I don't think we ever thought, and you can speak to that, that we were gonna have to kill these trees. That was never, we chose a matching species.
Exactly.
We'll kill these bats that were there.
Yeah.
So I, I, I don't know. So that's, that's the end of there.
Reiterate what I, they can say, but I don't. It's hard to get the justification to spend ten thousand dollars to, to dig these trees out.
I hear you.
Still would give them away, but that's just all a matter of time.
Councilmember Will. How, what did you say? How many trees roughly? Kyle, one hundred and seventeen?
So the original grant application included one hundred and twenty-one trees. However, the original grant application also included the median that was paid over Route one oh one. And so the state said, okay, well, if you don't have a median, then you can't plant there. And so we're down to one hundred and fourteen.
Okay. How many, I think, I was trying to count them, but we're driving too fast. There must be maybe between forty trees down there now.
But we're driving, but just the cherry trees, right?
No, no. Right, so, yeah, and you look out there and see cherry trees, yeah. Boy, they're gonna be growing into each other. That's neither here nor there, but. With one hundred and fourteen now. Yeah, we got it. So that's fine. So when we're having the thirteen trees removed, so all the other trees will be cut down?
Yeah.
The floppies.
The, the floppies.
Yeah.
The floppy ones.
Oh, the floppy ones. It's bad. Wait, are you talking about the floppy ones? Are you also talking about the nice ones in the centers that grow straight up?
So all, all, all trees?
Oh, yeah. When she said floppy trees or floppies.
No, I took them down. You're right.
So I know them. Okay. And. People of Riedel in about twenty years will have a beautiful entrance. We will not be here to see it. The little trees out that they gave us, the cherry trees down here, they're about three years old now. So. But, okay, that answered my questions. Ron?
Just a quick one. So this, this extra cherry tree option does not exist unless we want them. Hopefully not. The extra ten thou, well, the seven thousand one hundred tree?
Yeah, it has to come from city funding.
Okay, but the original, the grant takes care of destruction of the trees, just not recovery of the trees?
Right.
Okay. And is the contractor willing to give his best guess as to which ones are viable and not viable if they pull them?
So I'm sure he's. So, yeah, so he, I'm sure he would be willing to give a yes, but he's not willing to give any kind of guarantee.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I just, it said that some of them had to be dug out by hand and excavator because they're too large at this point. And I have a feeling those are the ones that would not survive.
So thirteen? Yes, there's, there's approximately thirteen. They would all have to be hand dug. And there's, there's maybe about five of them where he would need, where they couldn't just, you know, physically handle the trees. They would need a little bit of equipment time to move them around. So. So that is, and I forget, but it's, it's relative, that portion of it, the equipment is, is a relatively small portion.
And I also have a hard time believing that anybody that accepted these trees would be able to put them in in a timely manner. Coming up this time of year either. So that kind of inhibits their growth wherever they go. So. And along with the other council members spending that much right now when we don't have to spend. Thank you.
My turn. Oh, no. No, my turn. So my grandparents used to tell me sometimes perfect is the enemy of good. Sometimes it is. And, and, and that was what I kept thinking about today. I do not wake up in the morning and say, hey, I'm gonna kill some trees today. It's really gonna improve my mood. Like that is like ever, no, at all. I can't reiterate that enough. But I am also feeling protective of the city budget and especially with a lot of these things we talked about in our mid-year budget update that are in flux right now. And I do think that there are probably other things we could put that kind of money towards that would serve the community and city staff. And everybody better. So I, I'm, I mean, I'm conflicted and I want to hear what everybody says, but I, I will be the first to go ahead and say. I kind of think that we should just nix the trees. Ouch. I'm sorry, I'm not a tree killer. I don't like it. I am a tree killer. But I, 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 I will just go ahead and say, I, I think that the best round for the whole community and for everybody. Because it's not just about what I want personally and what I feel should happen personally. It, it's, it's what I think is best for everybody. And I think what's best for everybody is to just plant new trees. And, and not try to transplant the old ones.
Thank you. Councilmember Will. Okay. It'd be nice if we could, if they can, take them out. And cherry trees are hard to transplant because the season before you're supposed to cut around the root ball. And, but if we could, could we put two over in our transplant for us, the city? Like over next to the police department? Somebody will get in. More police. Another, ah, police department. And a couple in the Triangle Park. And just to save some, if possible. I know, I know. I don't know because I know that the, I know that city property is going to have new trees planted on city property. Because I don't know how much weight of the one hundred and fourteen trees, some of them are gonna be.
You're taking out the cherry trees, the blooming trees right in front? I thought it was just a gateway. No, no, we're adding two of those.
We're, we're adding, on city hall grounds, there's not a lot of trees. But there, there is one that appears to have passed away. So there might be that one that gets taken out. But that, but the other, the other ones were not planned to be.
No, I thought we were gonna have to get one of those.
But a lot of the trees on the city hall grounds are kind of at their apex of the, you know, life. And so I think, you know, getting these trees planted and then, you know, as those trees. You know, may need to be removed at some point in the future just because of wind hazards or something like that. And so by then, the trees will have grown up.
I just wanted to know. Thank you. And I have one question. Kyle, do you know the age of the trees that they would be planting? Do you know?
So they're, they're, they're relatively small. They're fifteen gallon, they're the fifteen gallon variety.
That is relatively small.
So I, I think that was originally the size of, there were three or four planted.
Out here by.
By Route one. So that would be the, that would be the size.
So that these trees up in, in front of our parking lot are part of the things that are destroyed.
No.
Another question is, can people come and get these or does that create a lot of other things? Say, you say somebody wants it, you're gonna get rid of some trees. Can they come over and? If you want to boss them, you have to go through the city.
If somebody really wants one of the trees and is willing to do it on their own.
I cross the street over here.
They would need to get a, an infringement permit. And not interfere with, with the contractors or, so. So we, you know, we can entertain that, but they'd have to get an infringement permit and the appropriate. Traffic controls and, and those, those types of things. So.
When it's all said and done, I think we, at least I would rather see this money go to beautifying the building because I go home with a beautiful boulevard.
Okay, so, City Manager. I'm gonna have to ask for a motion, but it's gonna have to be an amended motion because I have to read what's here. So if, if we want to make the motion and not include the ten thousand nine hundred forty-one dollars for the cherry trees. How do we make, do you just stop, stop reading or should you say an amended motion?
Under your recommended actions on page ninety-four, the second option, which would be to approve a contingency without cherry tree removals for twelve twenty-nine.
Whoever makes the motion takes a sudden line or the, and make that motion, please.
I, I will do my best. I will take one here. Sorry, guys. Where's the motion number? All right. I move to authorize the City Manager to approve the contingency without the cherry tree removal for a total of twenty-one thousand dollars.
Without?
Without cherry tree removal.
Is there a second? We have a second? I'm, I'm, I'm speaking, okay. Motion carries. The floor. What is dead yet? Should we have a?
I know. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, it's gonna be in the paper tomorrow. Evil tree killer.
You can't even blame him.
I know. It's not a terrible picture. I mean, they always do.
We can age a chip in and have a big.
I'll get with you, Robert. I've got it.
All right. Now we're moving on to ordinance and special resolutions. The second reading and adoption of ordinance number four zero three two zero two four. Amending the city zoning regulations to, one, define and allow residential care homes with six or fewer persons by rights in all residential zones. Two, update the definition of family to mean one or more persons living together in a dwelling unit. And three, provide for farm employee housing consistent with state law and zones that allow agriculture as a permitted use. Pursuant to the State Employee Housing Act. Page ninety-eight in our package. Before I turn this over, I actually have to go back. I did not ask for public comment on that last.
Oh, okay.
On the tree.
Any, oh, sure. Do you have any?
Four hundred eyes on me. Yeah, I have no problem. Well, you can do it.
Okay, were there any hand raised? Were there any emails? Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, but you're right. That was just another side of my part. But now we are on to the second reading. City Manager.
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor Garance, members of the council. Thank you, Kevin Caldwell, Community Development Director. This item was first brought to your attention at the meeting of February sixth. These are text amendments that are identified in our state-approved. These are text amendments that are identified in our state-approved housing element. And what it will do, it'll actually bring us in more compliance with state housing laws. The amendments are really minor in nature. It would allow for residential care homes with six or fewer residents in all residential zones by right, meaning you don't have to go through a use permit. Any more than six residents in one unit would require a use permit process, which of course invokes public noticing and a public hearing. The second minor text amendment is the definition of family, and that would incorporate what the definition is in state law. And then the third text amendment would have to do with employee housing on land to allow agricultural uses. As discussed at a meeting of February sixth, these are minor amendments in nature. And we would recommend if your council doesn't have any questions of staff to approve ordinance number four oh three dash two zero two four, which has included the detachment one in your packet. And again, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Councilor Wilson? Councilor Wilson?
No questions.
Councilor Wilson? Mayor Wilson? Any? Any hand raised, any emails? Then I will ask for a motion to approve the adoption of ordinance number four oh three two zero two four. So, you have a motion, the second, you have motion in the second? Motion carries five zero, just wanted to thank that. Our final item, introduction and first reading of ordinance number four oh four two zero two four, amending the Rio Del municipal code establishing a cannabis cultivation tax guarantee. Page one zero seven in our packet.
Again, Mayor Garnes, I apologize. Again, Mayor Garnes, members of the council, this again, as Mayor Garnes indicated, starts on page one oh seven of your packet. This is an amendment to the cannabis tax regulations, and this was brought about due to a couple of recent incidents regarding really cultivation on Dinsmore Plateau. Back in twenty twenty-two, Dinsmore Plateau Farms basically was not able to pay the cultivation taxes for that year. And unfortunately, it resulted in quite significant loss to the city. It was approximately eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars in the end. One of the reasons the city established commercial cannabis cultivation regulations was based on Measure X, which was approved by the voters in twenty seventeen, actually approximately eighty-one percent of the voters approved the cannabis tax in twenty seventeen. And that's why the city moved forward with cannabis cultivation regulations. As the council's aware, we currently charge two dollars a square foot. There is wiggle room in the tax regulations that allow for the city to adjust that per square foot cannabis tax based on issues like mold or fungus, total crop failure, that type of thing. What brought this to the attention this year is that the farmer who took over the Dinsmore Plateau Farms, New Earth Farms, apparently is not coming back to the city of Rio Del, and they owe approximately forty-two thousand dollars in cannabis taxes. And what we're doing is not unusual. Many jurisdictions that allow commercial cannabis cultivation activities require some form of surety bond to ensure that we get our taxes one way or another. And what this ordinance does, it would allow the city, if this ordinance is adopted, to either require a surety bond, a deposit escrow, or a letter of credit from a bank or other financial institution, basically guaranteeing the payment of these cannabis taxes. We believe it's appropriate at this time, given the nature. Truly what we're concerned about is what's called the grow and go, kind of like the dine and dash. We want to make sure that these farmers that come to Rio Del actually pay their taxes. And we're lucky, we actually have some really good farmers that regularly pay their taxes. And unfortunately, these two situations brought to light the need to adopt regulations to ensure that the city gets the taxes that the residents of the city of Rio Del pass in Measure X, making sure we get that two dollars per square foot, or at least some, some form of taxes based on the situation that occurs at that time. Again, the ordinance actually starts on, on page one ten of your packet. And if you, if you look at it, it's pretty simple. Again, there's basically three methods of payment or insurance. One is, again, the surety bond, the deposit escrow, or the letter of credit. It's a fairly short ordinance, basically three pages. And then, of course, if adopted, we would have to amend the sequential order of the subsections of Chapter five. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that your council may have. If not, we recommend that the item be scheduled for your meeting of March fifth for the second reading approval and ultimately adoption of the ordinance.
Thank you, committee director Caldwell. Open the rover? Um, no questions. Mayor Wilson?
Not really a ton of questions. Just to spread a little bit of background, they, the growers on the Dinsmore Plateau at the very beginning advocated the two dollars a square foot guarantee, correct? They really wanted that locked in, right? Yes, they did, okay. And we also have a thing set up where if they're starting to experience mold, they can let the city know. We can go look and verify, oh, yes, mold, right? But they don't do that. Did that happen this time, the new, the new guy?
Kevin, can you speak to that?
We did not get any indication at all that he experienced crop loss until we sent him a reminder that the taxes were due. At that time, he indicated that there were some, some issues associated with mold and fungus. One of the things we made clear in the twenty twenty-four Cannabis Declaration is that if they do have an issue, they need to notify us immediately, and they need to document that issue should they seek tax relief.
Ten more, thank you, that's it for me.
No, I thought Travis was asking if he answered my question, so you, Councilor Wilson?
Oh, I have a basically, I think a comment is that along, it's along, it's along the lines of Councilman Carter's question is, whoever took this over took it over from the previous people that controlled it. With the assumption, I can say on the side of the city is that they know what they're doing, and they understood clearly, I can't believe it, Mr. Caldwell, and they could clear to them that they needed to communicate to him that they were having a problem. And so, in this case, it's, what do you call it, dine and dash?
Right, right, yeah, dine and dash.
I think we need to have something here that if you're gonna get into this business, it's not a new business, it's a, it's an outstanding business in the county that there's some guarantee for the city, so they don't wanna do it, like, if somebody else that does wanna do it, show up and do it. So, yeah, let's. We don't make a motion that we pass.
Met a mayor, if I may, for just a second. I do wanna make sure the council is aware that New Earth Farms, before they were allowed to grow to cultivate, we told them they were required to pay the outstanding tax amount that was agreed upon for Dinsmore Plateau Farms, which was almost seventy-two thousand dollars. And they did pay that prior to the twenty twenty-three growing season. And that'll be the case in twenty twenty-four, should somebody want to cultivate up on that same site. They will be responsible for the forty-two thousand dollars, unless some sort of agreement through documentation is made to reduce that tax liability.
Thank you. Are there any public comments, any hand raised, any emails? Okay, then I will ask for a motion to accept the first reading and continue this to the next meeting of March fifth for approval and adoption.
So moved.
You have a motion in there, second?
Sure.
You have a motion in the second? Motion carries five zero. Councilor Wilson?
Thank you, I have a Redwood Region Economic Development Commission meeting on Monday, February twenty-sixth. Should be great fun, I don't know what's on the agenda yet, but it's always a good time up there. We are doing disaster response training on March second, that is a Saturday. I don't know if there's any spaces left, so we'll leave that part to Mayor Garnes, but I'll be there. We have a nuisance committee meeting tomorrow at three P M. here in City Hall. And lastly, the Humboldt Humane is a low-cost baby neuter shelter that has opened in Burnbridge. I know they were open, and they were open, but now they are back open. So just anybody who's listening or wants to spread the word that the Eau River Valley now does finally have its own low-cost baby neuter clinic, we don't have to drive all the way to Myrtle Town, so yay for us. Go ahead and give them a call, they're taking cats and dogs. Thank you, that's it.
Where in Carver?
It's right next to what you see, the Angelina Inn.
Oh, yeah.
Right there, yep.
Can I ask you, is it just baby neuter, or do you?
It's not a standard veterinary practice, you are still stuck with what we got for that. But for low-cost baby neuter, and I think like first rounds of shots and things, yeah, they'll do that, definitely, yep. And it's the same people who started Humboldt Baby Neuter, but they just have moved down here.
Councilor Wilson?
Went to an HCA meeting on Thursday, basically approved the dispersal of transit funds to the localities, but the big thing out of that was the hard closure of the bridge in Ferndale for forty hours, so.
And we're gonna see.
I think there's signs on.
There, yeah, yeah. Could see if we're gonna be taking blue side roads, oh, slow down, guys.
I just, I have a council meeting, RCA meeting this Thursday, and so we'll be able to, we'll be able to attend that insurance thing, which hopefully somebody, people will be able to attend that insurance, Zoom, Zoom meeting about whether or not you're gonna have homeowners insurance. That's all I have.
And I went to HCA Humboldt Transit Authority last Friday and got a tour of the entire facility and explained how the whole thing worked and how we're connected. I didn't know, for example, you could get from President City to Calistoga via the Redwood Transit System. You just go, you get down the UConn, and you transfer over to Mendocino, and on you go. And that there is no bus route from here that will get you to Sacramento. It all stops before that, and then you're just stranded. So it was very, actually, very, very interesting. And the one thing that everyone in Rio Del needs to know is that, starting Monday, this past Monday, the nineteenth, yesterday, the transit is now starting at seven, an hour earlier, so maybe six. But the last bus coming through Rio Del going north will be at eight, which is two hours later than it had been, or hour and a halfish. So, yeah, so that's, that's interesting and a good, a good development. And I think that's, that's all for me.
Oh, my God, Jewish turn, oh, I just wanted to thank Mary for all those. That's a lot of work, and I sure appreciate it. And I apologize for the. We can, you have to say, so much we forgot to.
All right, is there a motion to?
So move to adjourned. Oh, I have to bother them, I say.
He adjourned until March fifth, twenty twenty-four, at sixteen.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, really.
Oh, that's all right.